And more wants than there are dollars. And I think that's where you want feedback, must say, ah, okay. Given we got roughly thirteen million dollars and we have wants of fourteen million, I've just been pulling that up a little more. You guys will say, what are we going to give up in order to cover this?
Yeah, no, and I think, I think that's a, that's a great approach. We, we certainly are working on a very condensed time schedule.
Yeah.
Years past, you know, the surveys went out first week of May, June, you know, all June to work with our staff. And then July, we would have a couple of workshops and then a draft budget at the end of July. This, we, I think, pulled together in three weeks.
Yeah.
But yeah, let us, let us pull the draft budget together. If there's anything that resonates from today's discussion that you say, hey, this, this struck me, and then Ramon, if you would email us your notes as well, that would be fantastic.
The one thing you will see different in the draft budget, last year, we had the chart of accounts approved. This year, we didn't really have a chart of accounts approved that I'm aware of. So some of the line items will slightly change, especially to address some of the projects that want to be completed and a little bit of cleanup of, some of them were a little too broad or a little too narrow. So numbers won't change bottom line, but you'll see different line items.
I just, my bias in charted accounts, it's more about where you do in your journal entries. Frankly, from a council standpoint, I look, I'm interested from an accounting standpoint, gap and all that things, I, press on, you'll figure all that stuff out, we're looking next year.
All right, by twenty-nine.
So, do we have a motion to adjourn our workshop?
Please adjourn.
And we have a second?
Second.
Would you like to have any discussion? All of them, they were signified by saying aye, please so.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we're going to adjourn the workshop. My proposal would take a five-minute break for a one-function dial breaks afterward. Then we'll re-continue at the five-thirty-five. Call the second half of our city council meeting and our regular city council meeting to order. And we'd like to ask the veteran-looking Mr. Zimmer if he do want to do our invocation this evening.
I want a cool head of hair.
Well, gracious Mother God, we thank you for this time that we can spend together to do the City of Alpine's work. And praise that, praise you for the meaning that surrounds us for the opportunities that we have here in Alpine. We ask you your blessings upon our citizens and upon this meeting in the name of our Savior Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Do we have a question?
I love the name of this city, it's alive, and I'm in the States of America, and to deliver the glory of which is advanced, on the nation, under God, in the visible, with the routine justice for all.
On the planet of Texas, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one nation.
Senator, do we have a quorum? And you please remind the approved votes for the council meeting.
Mayor, for ten, we do have a quorum within a few seconds for Mayor Ramon. And the notice was posted at five p.m. on November first, twenty nineteen.
Thank you very much. Would I ask that everyone of you put their cell phones on silence or stun mode, whichever you prefer. And also, if you'd like to make some comments during the seasonings meeting, as you recall, we have two ways to do that. You can either sign on the log that we have over on the table over there, or during a meeting, agenda items, you'll all raise your hand and we'll respond accordingly. If you do make comments, please, a little bit of three minutes, so we have sufficient time to cover all of our meeting agenda items for the seat. Is there anyone who'd like to make comment before we get started? Hearing none? Whoops, I'm sorry. Yes. I thought this was a little voice.
Will you just stand right here, is that fine?
Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to bring, thank you board for hearing me out real quick. I vaguely met with Mr. Zimmer and some of his staff and some people from the community on Wednesday at coffee with the manager. And I just wanted to, to thank him for listening out to me about our kiddos in the community and our reg leagues with our football and basketball, baseball, soccer leagues. And as I was telling him how hard it is for the mothers and dads and families trying to run those leagues and how not, I guess, not trained, all of us are to do that. As I step back with my new position, I'll be stepping back from, you know, with the community and helping in that aspect. I ask that the city please keep them in your, I guess, in your thoughts to help them run those organizations because I believe that if we want to keep our kiddos safe and productive, you know, a lot of our kids go to McDonald's and then they go to Sol Ross and hang out or they participate in all these leagues, we need to keep them running and operating. In order to do that, I think we need an adult or someone to help organize or to help our fathers and mothers and families that are trying to run these organizations, keep them afloat for, for so our kids can have something to do. So, thank you, Mr. Zimmer for that and board, if you'd just keep in mind those things. Thank you.
Justin, thanks. And you might make comment, I forgot to ask you to introduce yourself. I, we know each other, but I'm not sure anyone else knows you here.
Justin Gonzalez, community member.
And high school principal.
High school principal.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. We have a couple presentations and recognitions for this evening I'll make on behalf of the mayor. I'm going to step over to the podium for these. First one, I'd like to invite Randy to come up, please. Randy Guzman. As we all know, Randy leads our gas department. And we had the opportunity a little bit earlier, starting at four o'clock, we had a discussion about budgets. And, you know, one of the things that Randy has done, and I've noted in the past, is not only brought in more revenue, but under Randy's budget, which I think is admirable from the city's standpoint. But I think what this is all about is you are now on the Texas Gas Association Board and this certificate of achievement is in recognition of that for being a two thousand nineteen, twenty season. And thanks for stepping up and providing that leadership because that helps not only you individually, it helps the City of Alpine and I think it helps the gas board itself. So, thanks very much and congratulations.
Thank you.
The next one is a little more challenging and we have, we have Mike here. This is a proclamation signed by all the members of the council and it's in honor of Fire Chief Mark Scudder. Mike, I'll let you sit there or stand up. I know this is a tough emotional challenge for you, so I'll let you pick either way, but I would like to read it. You know, "The community of Alpine is devastated following the death of Fire Chief Mark Scudder on September nineteenth of two thousand nineteen. Scudder left behind a legacy of immense enthusiasm and uncarlored dedication to the City of Alpine and its citizens. Scudder was born in El Paso on August thirtieth, nineteen sixty, at Providence Memorial Hospital." I guess you were there at the same time too, weren't you? Yes, that's true. In May of two thousand, or nineteen seventy-three, Scudder moved to Alpine at the age of twelve. He attended Alpine Junior High School beginning his eighth grade year. At the young age of fourteen, Scudder joined the Alpine Volunteer Fire Department as a junior firefighter. One year later, at the age of fifteen, he and Mike took an ECA course sponsored by the Texas Department of Health at Sol Ross State University and became certified emergency care attendants. The brothers began working on emergency care attendance in December nineteen seventy-six and began a course to become EMTs in August of that same year. They graduated as EMTs in March of nineteen seventy-seven. The Scudder twins were the youngest certified EMTs in the state of Texas, a record which still holds today. As the Department of Health, as the Texas Department of Health certification age requires, our departments later changed to eighteen years. Once certified, the Scudder brothers began working as EMTs in March of nineteen seventy-seven as employees of West Texas Annual Service. Scudder graduated from Mounttown High School at seventeen in May of nineteen seventy-eight. That fall, he began studies at Sol Ross State University studying criminal justice and business of the situation. That same year, at age eighteen, the Scudders became full members of the Alpine Volunteer Fire Department. Scudder served as a captain and later became assistant chief. Two years later, in May of nineteen eighty-one, Scudder became a certified paramedic through Odessa College. Scudder's brother and his brother began their company, West Texas Annual Service, Alpine EMS, in nineteen eighty-five. And Scudder served as the operations supervisor ever since. Scudder has served as the chief of the Alpine Volunteer Fire Department since January of two thousand. The City of Alpine is eternally grateful to Fire Chief Scudder for his passion, dedication, and forty-five mill years of service to our community, signed by every member of the city council. Mike, thanks very much. And it's end of watch service on that day. Very good. Good night, Ramon.
Thank you.
I know that he's looking down.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. The mayor had none, so I'll turn it over to the city attorney. I know you've got three things to talk about tonight, Rod, landfill, railroad crossing, municipal.
The, Mr. Zimmer and I will meet next week with some of the players on the landfill to try to get more information, bring to the council. I was also reviewing the issue of the engineers who's certified with closing of that without actually inspecting it and what the city's remedies are in that situation. So I, pretty soon, Mr. Zimmer and I can come back to you all with some more facts and some recommendations on moving forward on that issue. Mr. Zimmer's worked hard on trying to deal with some of the railroad crossing issues. Coming, but springing back to life the issue of noise, potentially even moving the tracks out of Alpine, but the, initially, we could, we're going to try to start pushing the railroad to change the pre-change area out of town to at least stop blockage of major streets, Fifth Street, but I can cause a safety issue with the block. The railroad likes to brag that they get it all done in five minutes. So there's two issues, a safety issue by the railroad park in town and the compliance of issue between, so anyway, that's, I've had to deal with, you said, the railway practice, so maybe a quick, quick solution, I guess, we'll start to work on it.
Is there, on that point, Rod, is there any legal grounds that the city has because they are complying with their time that they're blocking all the road?
The, in Pecos, we passed an ordinance that forbid them from parking longer than five minutes. And in Pecos, we had a really bad situation because they were blocking two eighty-five, which is the only north-south highway. So if they parked for ten minutes, you had traffic blocked, backed up all the way to Interstate twenty. And so people couldn't even go across town. And we fought that in court and we modified it because you can't pass an ordinance that blocks everything under, you had to try to point out the specific safety issues that arise from their operation of the track. So we were successful in getting an ordinance passed that they still didn't want to obey, but they didn't want to litigate it either, the city moved. So there's, it's, fighting the railroad is tough, but it's possible. And municipal court, our partners here, working hard together and we're going to try to wrap up a lot of the old cases here by the end of the year that are, that are lingering, give me a bit of them, so we can start the new year fresh, send out the ones that were able to be sent for collection to collection. Tear out the rest of the backlog and going forward, we're going to be in a good position to stay current.
Council, any questions for Rod?
I bet that municipal court is Tuesday, right?
Yes.
What time is it?
Nine o'clock.
Okay. So if anybody's in town, be here.
If we're having, if we're having it every month and I'm starting to get people calling me, wanting to, let's make a deal, let's, let's work our deal, let's work our case out, we're starting to see people actually responding to document, to take their cases.
Great. Yeah, sitting in the municipal court is always an interesting time. Yes, so, good.
Thanks.
Mr. Zimmer?
I do have a short report this evening because I do want to yield over to Scott and Megan, who have some great points for us this evening. But I want to give an update on our hundred-and-eighty-day plan, the proxy number one, third or sixty days into the plan. Top three priorities was department head staffing, budget and training. Anticipation at the end of this evening, all of our positions will be identified, filled with department head model. Happy with that myself personally, just as a side note, because I become the long pole in the tent on a lot of decisions and that is not overly healthy for the city. Budget workshop, I thought we had a good session earlier today, some good takeaways. Helps, you know, not only Megan myself, but our department heads and our other interested parties, we're moving, moving through with the budget amendment. And our training for key leadership, first three dates set, November twentieth, December ninth, and January fourth. Staff is really excited about those, those training sessions coming up. You know, the other thing that I think we're really starting to build some steam on is good, good staff reports we'll see from both Scott and Megan. Last evening, we had Randy and Darrell up. And the idea will be to continue to, to work with them and delve further into priorities, challenges and things that they're working on so that council and community is, is kept abreast of that. Certainly, our community outreach programs, problems of manager, laws, host of community events, as Mr. Gonzalez shared earlier, you know, what's exciting to me is, is when I, I see somebody show up and then the enthusiasm to actually come to a council meeting as well and, and make those reflections back. We know how important that is to our community. So I certainly, I, I will say, it was, I didn't call Justin and ask him to show up and he, he did and I really, I really appreciate that because it is important. Tourism and parks, great feedback engagement with our Parks Committee, with Chris, Brugia and tourism. I think, you know, as we contemplate the events that cycle through, October, November, December, how we're managing that is, is certainly important. And we've got a great series of events queued up with our holiday parade as well as the other gatherings. Next sixty days, you know, as I think through, you know, how do we prioritize what we're doing with our building official, you know, inspections or code enforcement? And then really pivoting into our grant law. So as I think through the next sixty days, that part of the plan, we've really got to get grounded on. Then we'll finish out the final sixty days with, with real concrete work on understanding the priorities, the challenges and the action plan that each department is working on, also how we're allocating our capital resources across the city. Cynthia and I were looking at this slide yesterday. We feel very confident in the pacing that we're moving at and certainly a great feedback session with our staff this morning at our department. Moving forward, utility billing, we've got Stephanie in our lead role there. We had sent out the deactivated account list balances to council a few weeks back. Stephanie has got first third of the letters out yesterday as I was finalizing the slide, the rest, rest to get out this week. If people don't respond, what we're doing is, if they have an existing account with the city, we're, we're going to transfer the balance. If they don't, we'll then send it to, through the collection process. So we're trying to mitigate ourselves first. If not, we'll, we'll get support from, from the collection. The other thing Stephanie and I worked through is billing ordinances, language updates, working back to council, I know we talked about that earlier today. You know, one of probably the bigger things that, that's going to posture up, is going to be an impact to everybody in this room, is our cutoff dates. What I mean by that is right now, if you don't pay your bill and it's on the gas side, latter part of the month, twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, you get cut off. Water, we actually are not cutting off until the second month. Okay? If we cut off the first month, right now, we would have a manpower issue. We have so many people that are delinquent on paying their account the month that is due. It would create certainly consternation, we would have to send our entire field and the team, or team in the field, I'm sorry. And so what we're trying to do is work through getting our ordinances straight first and then we're going to do it all hands-on deck when we decide to really pull the trigger and bring that water back into one month. The reason why that's important is your minimum bill on water is like seventy-two fifty bucks. And so right now, your deposit's set at seventy-five dollars. If you're two months back, then the city's going to be a loss. I mean, there's no way we can recoup it just with the, with the deposit. And so I'm, I'm more pranking council for this is, if we do this, it's, it's not going to be an easy process. There's going to be a lot of folks complaining. But we need to do this, it is important that people, you know, keep going on with this. On a, on a softer, lighter note, we've got our online gas payment in motion to get that implemented. Right now, people can pay with water, but we need to provide for the gas side too. The other thing that Stephanie has queued up with her team is customer service training for disgruntled customers. So we're preparing for what will happen. And please understand, one good day for people to be in here and observe is on cutoff day. That's why I talked about earlier, the importance of having myself, Cynthia and Megan in here. Cutoffs are not easy, it's, it's the rough part of the job. And we're doing a good job of communicating back to our police department with the list, but it is something that we do certainly have to address and so I want council to do.
So I presume when you change from two months to one month for water, you'll get articles in the paper and all the avalanche of stuff out and announcements out so people aren't fully warned. Regardless of that, half the people are going to say, hey, I didn't hear it, didn't understand and, and I'm sorry.
It's, it's going to take us probably two cycles, two billing cycles to get everybody back to the spot where they.
Do you have a sense of timing for that, Eric? Is it like January, February?
What Stephanie and I have discussed is once we get the billing ordinances in place, we want to get that certain first because we're working through these deactive accounts and getting those bills paid and current. Then we'll get the, the ordinances through, you know, by January and then by February. The other thing that we're going to probably have to do that first month is get assistance from our gas and from our public water system too, because the lists at one month are pretty high. And then we have to, what, what ends up happening is we have to take our entire water and sewer crew and put them out in the field for cutoffs. And then if we had taps or leaks, then we don't have anybody there to, to address them. So it really is a substitution issue.
So just, we have about how many water bills, we had a question, it's about twenty-five hundred. And how many are delinquent a month ago?
Stephanie, how many, how many out of the twenty-five hundred are delinquent one month or one month behind?
Um, well, so this month's cutoffs, I had about fifteen pages, maybe thirty people per page.
So that says.
About twenty percent.
Twenty percent. So that's four hundred and fifty to five hundred people are delinquent.
Are delinquent for a month.
There you go. It's okay, I'm just trying to get some sense, yeah. That's huge.
Yes. So we're going to address the needs, but I'm glad we've got the media here so that we, we understand the problem, we're going to address it. Hopefully through that, if people will, will start getting current again.
What happens if people are gone for a month and the bill comes in or whatever and they have to pay it and it doesn't work out?
Well, the beauty is that we have the online pay function so they can go online and pay anywhere in the world.
So will the water, the gas, if we, like you said, if they repeat the same page?
Um, yes, we target our cutoffs in like about twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth month, depending. Like this month, we're not going to do it on Thanksgiving. Christmas, we certainly would do on Christmas.
Well, the other we have is automatic withdrawal.
Correct, ACH.
ACH, we're great.
Or, you know, another, another solution is if somebody knows they're going to be out of town, they can come and pay and have a, a credit balance. Airbnb short-term rental update, Chris and I met with Scott Joslove from Texas Hotel Lodging Association this week, I'm sorry, this past week. And really a fantastic meeting with Scott. Couple of things that he could help us do is initiate, negotiate voluntary collection agreement with Airbnb. If you look out in the media, you see some of the discussions about how communities are working back with Airbnb. There are certain collection items that we forego if we work back with the voluntary collection agreement. But with that said, administratively, it's easier to, to occur because then people are actually paying that through Airbnb and Airbnb's providing to us. But these four steps here, Scott Joslove is doing as part of this association, will review our testing hotel grants policy, semi-annual training seminars, and review our hot out applications along with the funding committee that we're working on. So this is something, I give Chris Brugia all credit on this. He, he brought Mr. Joslove in and I think this is, falls right in alignment with what we want to see happen. The other thing, I got a little impatient with figuring out who the hotel operator or the Airbnb operators were in town, so we sent a couple of our staff members on a field trip and they just about collected, using the pictures off of Airbnb, Geo, as he's been going around town. So we'll provide that list to Chris and what Chris is going to do is we're going to have the nice letter and then the, the letter that, so the real nice letter will be to those folks that are already paying their hotel occupancy tax, thank you for doing it. And then we'll send a second letter to those, hey, you might not be aware, here's what the requirements call for, we need you to come in and get registered. So, and then my last note bottom is, we talked about a little bit earlier on that crap. And then my last note bottom is, we talked about a little bit earlier, language for that hotel funding. We talked a little bit about our facilities, building facilities at our budget workshop today. You know, we're certainly strained here. Public works as well is, you know, we have very limited office space at our maintenance yard over there. You know, our primary properties of interest are post office, sunshine house, we're also getting some alley closures, street closures that are coming in. You know, as we talked about in our budget workshop, if we're selling off other properties, how do we really make sure we identify, allocate, put that money in reserve for other specific projects? Something for council to consider and we'll work through as that comes together. We also, Cynthia has got some other properties that we've raised that we'll get in front of council. I anticipate next, council meeting on the 19th to talk about whether we want to push it forward with that. Like I said, trying to keep short tonight to give Scott and Megan ample time. Questions, thoughts on where we're at? Good. Questions for her?
Say none?
Scott, it looks like it's your turn. Counsel, in your packet, Scott's presentation.
It just touches on some key points of interest that are out of my, I'm still evaluating a few things, but infrastructure wise, these were some of the things that stood out immediately as areas of concern that are causing us some of the malfunctions or issues that we're having either with TCEQ operationally, things that are hitting us hard in the pocketbook or with the state. So that's kind of why I put them in the order that I did on here. One or the other could certainly take precedent over the other, but tried to put them in the best I could in order of importance here. But as I put in here, there's a number of issues with the utilities department. Going back a couple of years, I went back and looked at previous TCEQ inspection forms to kind of just see where things were left off and where we need to pick up. There were quite a few issues that were unmitigated from 2017 moving forward. We've got a good comprehensive guess. A Washington who works with us has been invaluable resource as far as having a bunch of good information to walk into and assist me in the process. But she and I were able to build a comprehensive list of the old inspections so we could immediately start attacking and identifying these deficiencies and get them off the books and start moving forward to mitigate our current issues. Waste water plant, we're in non-compliance and have been for some time on a number of things. But a lot of it really reverts back to 20-plus years of not planning ahead. But that plant was really designed to treat a different kind of capacity for a different community. It was really designed to treat a much larger volume of water. And we're permitted as such also. We're permitted for about $1.4 million a day. And we're only putting out about $400,000 on average a day. And I'm just doing this before I go through this because it's kind of helps touch on a few things. Put it in perspective, if you will, if TCEQ envisions us as a community on paper who's putting out three times the amount of volume we are, then they're mandating us to do three times the amount of testing we really ought to be doing, which keeps us under the gun much more stringent than we would be otherwise if our system is more adequately suited for this community. So one of the things, and it's actually in here, but to touch on it real quick, that we're going to be visiting with the TCEQ and our engineers, we're going to get in talks with them about it, but trying to get those perimeters lowered so that it can knock a bunch of our sampling frequencies that we're currently doing is going to cut costs drastically. But more importantly, it's going to cut down liabilities for sampling errors and with things that can go wrong, they can cause problems. So if you're taking 150 samples and knock that down to 50, that's a nice reduction in concerns. And more importantly, it's an adequate and more realistic representation of what our plant's doing with TCEQ so it should keep us more closely in correspondence with the permits of our power, guidelines of our permit currently. I think that's the big problem. Some of the other things that are listed in here, like the air conditioner equipment, clarifier repairs, what these are is it's an extended air plant. It requires air to keep these pathogens and aerobic bugs alive to do their job. Over the years, we've got several components within this plant that have failed, deferred maintenance issues, just general wearing out. And some of the key components have not been replaced. I know we're supposed to have by design two aerators in that plant, been on one for about seven years. So it's already not functioning correctly. And in a nutshell, we've got a large wastewater plant that's full of solids, completely full of solids. It's not really doing its job properly. So the things that are listed in here are things that will address the malfunctions within the wastewater treatment plant to get this thing where if we're adequately treating it at the first part of the plant, at the second part of the plant, the third, it has phases, and each of them has a major deficiency that's causing this short circuit. And those are what are listed in here primarily. I'd say that probably encompasses 70% of the 180-day plans.
So Scott, council approved three capital items. One was an aerator, another was a belt press, another one I think was the bar screen.
Yes, sir.
Where are we with all of those?
Made some headway on some, more than others. Actually, it was notified today that on November 12th, we are to take delivery, and maybe the following day, depending on how long it takes them to get here, of the belt press unit. Excuse me, I believe the second payment was approved and made, so we're done with that end of it. We actually got the location allocated and marked out so they can get hooked up to electric and all that. We're just waiting on November 12th for them to show up. That'll take care of the belt press. In the permit amendment, we'll have to address some issues coming into our new permit, which our current one expires September of 2020. But you have to have your permit renewal application in by March 1 of 20. So these things that are hopes and wishes, we're asking TCEQ to amend. One of them will be permanently putting that unit online and getting everything, because when we go from the drying beds to that, they have to make a permit amendment. So about the time we have it up and ready to go and start operating, hopefully we'll have a green light from TCEQ that says, hey, you can switch from drying beds to your belt press unit. But it's on its way to delivery. The gentleman's going to be here to train us in December. We haven't galvanized the testing date, we're going to have all the hands on deck for that. And let's see, what was the other one you asked? Aerator?
Aerator.
The aerator. The technicians from the engineer's office were out last week, I believe, last Wednesday and Thursday, coming out to get dimensions and measurements. There's tethering equipment that holds that unit in the center of the lagoon, or at the racetrack, rather. I visited with them briefly, but they just came out to make sure we had adequate power supply, everything was ready to go, once they get ready to sit in. I have not heard back from them on what they delivered to the engineer, but I expect to hear something before the end of this week. I did emphasize that I'd like to have word back from them by the end of this week.
Yeah, so the strategy that we adopted was go get a new aerator, because the other one, as you pointed out, is ancient. It leaks all like a sieve. Just put the new aerator in and then send the other one out and go get rebuilt. What's your sense of timing when the new aerator's going to be installed and operational?
Ideally, or what these folks may really do.
What's your...
There's no reason, if things move along exponentially, it shouldn't be installed in operation by the end of January. That's my...
So it's going to take that long?
Unfortunately, I think it might take up to that.
Wow.
And that's based solely upon my correspondence with these individuals, the engineers and the vendors. And all honestly, they haven't moved as fast as I'd like on a few things, but they're improving a little bit and we're working that out.
So what happens if our current one, or do you have a plan to keep the current one up and running until the end of January?
Well, honestly, that thing's been running for seven years. If someone turns it off, it's never going to start again.
Well, I know.
Without a rebuild.
Yeah, so that's the worst.
I can tell you that I have made a couple of calls. One of them's with a gentleman, his name is Mark Rowland with the state, Texas Water Utilities Association. He's kind of an idea man, puts you in contact with people. He did send me a list of two individuals who provide emergency replacement rotors, components, things for different kind of treatment purposes. Because it's really such a specialized type of operation, there's really not a universal piece of equipment you have to sit there. There's a lot of them have to go into how much oxygen they'll churn and stuff. So that being said, I do have a line on emergency if we really need to rent one and throw one in in the interim. Part of me coming here, looking through paperwork, I can't find a contingency plan up to date as to what they'll do in the future, but we're working on that. Redundancy is, I'm very fond of it, and we're lacking it. I know most of the components out there, but we're putting a plan B together on it.
Okay. You might just, Eric, keep us updated on that one because that was the major risk why we said they would need out here. You might be thinking that first one, taking water and that thing.
Well, the other main components that's failing out there as well that I listed on here is clarifier. I'm not sure how much has been addressed, but it's a very sensitive part of the plant. Kind of concerned about some of the components at the upper level that are at the surface that you can see. We've got some welds and seams that are separating and hooks that have come in. What that tells me is that the plant, obviously, like I said, is full to bulk. There's a rake at the bottom of those clarifiers that I believe years of operation like that has just shifted things, moved them around. But they're at a point now where I have taken photos of all of it as well and submitted to the engineers. They've been out to look, but I have not had any. One of the problems I was faced when I was visiting with, I was presuming that Megan on this, nobody got back to me with some of the prices on this, so it's really kind of up in the air. It's such a specialized thing, it's hard to ballpark.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions on that? I mean, really, the other main concerns I'm dealing with right now, we're kind of short on standard operating procedures for things. The state requires them for a certain type of operations. It's also a good policy to have your own SOPs as to how your department needs to do their business. But we're developing those for all of our water and wastewater functions for TCEQ 290 regs. City had some old ones, there've just been some legislative changes since then, so we're updating those, getting all that in order so that all the employees are brought up to date. That's the biggest problem I found with is we've got a good staff, just some information hasn't been disseminated through time so that they've been brought up to speed on certain things. But we're making a lot of headway between that and implementing some in-house policies. Just trying to move forward and see what our talents are, what our capabilities are, and try to capitalize those. Some of the folks are getting reassigned a little, and I'm kind of shaking it up a little. I'm putting everybody but the meter readers in a different phone, I need to kind of see what everybody's capabilities are so that I can better staff the guys in the field and be more efficient. Kind of where we're at on that. Any questions, your comments?
I guess the last question I'd ask, Scott, is relative to TCEQ.
Yes, sir.
And what I think I heard was you're working your way through the issues we've had in the past so we don't have a recurrence of those.
Yes.
Do you see anything on the horizon that gives you pause for concern that you're really sweating that TCEQ might come in and slap their hand?
I'm not sweating it, but I absolutely see it on the horizon if you want me to be brutally honest.
I'm asking.
However, in doing this, I've been real comprehensive about gathering information, photographs. I've been doing a self-inspection as I'm going. And as I'm cataloging all of our, I mean, I'm GPM, doing gallons coming in on the wells, trying to get airline tests on all of them I can, trying to get a lot of baseline info to come in and see, you know, honestly, where we're lacking and where we're missing some of this information. But there's so much that, there's so many small things that it's adding up to be quite a burden. Quite a few of them I think we can take care of, but some of the administrative things going back probably to 2018-ish in that area, there's some gaps on reporting and paperwork. On those, all I can do is get everything together, keep our ducks in a row, very sharp for now, and pick up where we left off on some of those things. We'll probably take a hit on a few administrative things, maybe areas of concern. I don't think we're looking at any, certainly not looking at anything that the public should be concerned about, but little things like trees growing next to the tank, they will ride us up for that. And so we've got housekeeping issues, just tons of things like that. But the big thing I would be concerned with is just some deferred issues that will probably be noted and primarily just a few admin things that we'll be looking, probably mostly due to lack of continuity while there were gaps and vacancies for the position, quite honestly.
And let me add, here's one of the things that Scott and I talked about, and if you remember, right before Scott joined the team, we had that list of 10 orders still open on TCEQs.
Yes.
And so Scott, you know, as you talked about working back with Jess, but Scott has been very communicative with TCEQ in the sense that if you're, as he and I have talked, if you over-communicate with them, it gives them less cause or less worry. It's when we shut down and we don't communicate back with them is when there's greater cause. And I appreciate Scott's diligence in really working back with them on a weekly base.
And I did call the regional offices, let them know there was a change in staffing, made sure they had updated contact info just to try to develop a rapport with them so they knew, hey, I'm not sure what was happening before, but I'd like to set the meter back to zero and let's get moving forward. And I've had a real positive response so far.
Well, you're, my sense is we've been with you, Tubby Director, for a year. The guys have been working really hard to put the fires out, so then firefighting as opposed to working on all the other items. So it's going to have some people to work that, so things stay in the field, you work the administration. Thanks, Scott.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Just Megan, you going to tell us where all the bins are?
Eric won't let me say what I wanted to say.
We ain't pot over flowing?
So this report is for the fourth quarter of 2019. It does not include any encumbrances, it's only the actual expenses as of 9/30 and actual revenues. Going to kind of run through it like we've typically done in the past. So at the end of September 2019, the general fund revenues totaled $4.4 million 366,933, or 90% of the total budget. The sales tax totaled for the fiscal year $1,693,761, which was a slight increase over last fiscal year. Property tax collections totaled $1,803,840, which is 99% of the budget. Just for some clarification, that's 99% of what we budget as a city. We typically don't budget 100%. We budget roughly 98% because there's always a little bit of delinquency in that. So I think we did very well for the year. Just as a reminder, the property taxes and the sales tax are the two largest supporting revenue sources for the general fund, totaling 73% of all budgeted revenues. The expenses totaled for the general fund, $4,223,964, or 88% of the budget. That means we brought in 2% more than what we spent. And we also did not take into consideration the fund balance and the reserve accounts that budgeted to balance the budget for the general fund. Out of the year, we have 26 payrolls. All 26 payrolls were posted. Looking at employee versus operating for the fourth quarter, which is July, August, and September, the general fund employee expenses, which includes salaries, overtime, FICA, retirement, unemployment, health insurance, and workers' comp, totaled $794,166. For the year, employees' expenses was $2,738,425, or 91% of the budget for employee expenses. Operating expenses, this is everything else, for the quarter totaled $398,774. For the year, $1,485,539, or 70% of the budget. One thing to point out, the salaries, employee expenses was slightly higher. You did have four employees who left the city during that time period that were all salaried and high paying. So that was a huge expense towards the city. The enterprise funds, water, wastewater and sanitation, for the fourth quarter, the water brought in... water brought in $411,177, or 23%. Revenues for the whole year for the water was $1,502,41, or 83% of the budget. The expenditures for the fourth quarter were $376,392, which was 25% of total budget. Solid waste revenues was $203,304, or 24% of the budget. Wastewater expenses, $269,046, or 39%. This does include the emergency purchases, down payments towards the aerator, the belt press, getting the facility back up and operating. Sanitation, total revenue was $578,410, or 30% of the budget. Expenses was $537,266, or 27%. The big chunk of that is the contract with TBS, Texas Disponable System. Utility billing expenditures totaled $136,924 for the fourth quarter. Airport revenue was $167,192, or 28%, while the expenditures was $193,866. The gas department revenues for the fourth quarter were $211,839, or 12% of the total budgeted amount, and the expenditures were $352,568, or 20% of the total budget for the fourth quarter. Interesting thinking, in the month of August, the debt payment was made. We make the debt payment, of course, twice a year, once in February for March 1st deadline, and then once in August for the September 1st deadline. The INS account covers what is just considered general fund debt, which is covered by our property taxes, and August payment was $18,038. So, sales tax over the quarter increased 3% from the quarter of the prior year, so you'll notice that September has got that nice little increase, and so does July. These aren't the actual sales taxes for those months, so in September, we actually get August, August we actually get July. So, I'm showing you basically what we actually receive. The hotel tax fund, we did increase slightly in August. Just please remember that when you look at the revenues for the hotel tax, it's the same thing as the sales tax, it's not reported in the same month, so a lot of our hotels, motels, airfares, these pay on a quarterly basis. So, if the end of the quarter, September, their payments wouldn't come in until actually October, they have till the 20th of the month. Monthly ones, of course, are your bigger hotels, hence why you see some of the big jumps in the off months, like August. So, I kind of wanted to look at the expenses a little bit more. I take a roughly 60-page report and condense it into 10 pages to kind of help give a synopsis of the actual revenue expenses for the city of Alpine. I take everything based on a quarterly. This fiscal year, I would request that we go back to monthly so that everyone is more focused on what's actually being spent. When we get audited, we have to look at where the expenditures and revenue came from, were we within our budget, were we not within our budget, did we amend our budget? The last quarter of the fiscal year, there was some significant expenses coming out. I know that there was some engineering expenses because the city did, and council did approve the different studies, but there was just over a lot of expenses. If you notice on the last column on page seven for the general fund expenses, you'll note that there are several departments who are over 100%. So, in looking at the different departments, you'll notice, you know, non-departmental, that's kind of the catch-all department, that's your appreciation funds, that's your library, your West Texas National, no, West Texas ambulance, your contracts, dues, memberships, that was at 102%. City council was at 114%. City administration was at 102%. Municipal court was at 142%. The police department was at 96%, fire department is at 24%, building services at 67%, human resource at 68%, finance at 96%, animal control at 90%, building maintenance at 26%, parks and pools at 108%, and streets at 74%. So, when you look at these budgets, a little less than half are over. So, I know one thing that we're going to focus on this year is making sure that we actually stay within the budget, and if we need to amend it for specific projects, emergencies, that it's actually, we go through that process. In order to amend the budget, it does have to be inordinate. We had the budget workshop before this, kind of get prepared because we do know that there will have to be some changes. If anything comes up from January moving forward, it will be additional amendments with an understanding of where the money comes from. Typically, when council approves something or department requests something, we have to make sure that it's in the budget and that there's a revenue source for it. So, if we're adding something to the budget, we have to ensure that there's a revenue source to cover it. So, we don't want to keep adding expenses without ensuring that the revenue's there. So, that was the general fund. Overall, I know a lot of people, especially from a business perspective, what's the bottom line? The bottom line is that the city didn't go over the entirety of the budget, but departmentally we did, and that should have been addressed throughout the year. So, one thing to look forward to this year from the finances, possible amendments and changes as needed. Looking at the water, wastewater, you'll notice that the solid waste operations is at 124%. That is primarily due to the emergency purchases, the belt press, the aerators, all needed in order to maintain normal functions. Hopefully, we'll get them sooner than later. The employee expenses, that includes all employees in those three departments, so that's water, the wastewater and the sanitation was at 74%. Water operations is at 73%, sanitation at 95%, and utility billing at 88%. So, the operations side does not include any of the salary side, so that needs to be pointed out, that the employee part is registered separately. There was a lot of turnover the past year, a lot of vacancies, ups and downs, so hopefully this number will be more consistent moving forward, it will be closer to what it needs to be, and that they're fully operational and they have their complete staff. So, in other words, it will be a little bit higher. The airport, because we did, our council did approve the raise in the fuel prices, you'll see revenue for the fuel is 109%. We brought in more than what was budgeted. We also spent more than what was budgeted. It is something that has kind of been an ongoing thing with the airport, there, as discussed at the budget meeting, the fuel is the only thing that really brings in revenue. It's also expensive sometimes to purchase. We don't sell it right away, so we do have inventory, so there is fuel on hand, and that's something that, in the future, I'm going to bring out so that we can kind of get a better view of how the airport's operating. It looks like they're over on their expenses, but they do have fuel on hand, so that's money sitting there that you'll get to see in the next report reflect as part of their assets. The hotel fund, we budgeted $625,000 in revenue, we brought in $592,878, so slightly below what was originally budgeted, but we also did not expense as much as anticipated. Total expenditures for the year was $476,641, so there is a slight difference there. On the gas department, they did bring in more than what was budgeted for revenue. Budgeted was $1.7 million, and at the end of the fiscal year, they had brought in $1.9 million, or 111% of the budget. The gas and water are very unique. Gas brings in all their money in the winter, water brings all their money in the summer. So, their expenditures usually do reflect different than their revenue throughout the year. The summer months, their expenditures will be a little bit higher for the gas, and their revenue will be a little bit lower, but all of their revenue does come in during the winter months. On the interest in thinking, we did leave all of our debt requirements. We always tend to bring in a little bit more as long as people are paying their delinquent taxes and their taxes in general, the property taxes. We have a little bit of extra, we brought in 107%, or $156,669. I just want to kind of let the public know, that's the only part of the city's general fund debt that's paid for by property taxes. So, out of the roughly 6,000, all those who pay property taxes, the city's only collecting 100 and, budgeted 146,118 for debt. I think that's outstanding considering where the city was a few years ago, five years ago. So, I also wanted to kind of bring up some of where the money went. So, some of the big, we try every year, the last quarter, not to have the capital purchases. Most of those capital purchases should have already been started, capital projects should have been put in place. We try not to do or have the mentality that, oh, I have money in my account, I need to spend it. From a financial perspective, it messes with cash flow, it also messes with what do we have left at the end of the year if we're encumbering huge chunks September 30th? So, some of the big purchases right at the end of the year was animal control put up their shelter, they actually had it in their budget for multiple years, they finally got it completed, which is good. It was a capital asset purchase of over 8,000 in August. The police department, they fixed their air conditioners, that was a capital purchase over 6,000. One of the ongoing bills from the council side is the Superior Land Service, that is the appraisals. So, in the last quarter, over 5,000 was spent to have buildings appraised. Part of the council budget is all those appraisals with 22,500 for the year. Code enforcement bought a technical camera, some kind of a camera, that was over $7,000. We had the KSA street study, that was 38,000. I don't believe we've made the final payment, or if we did, it was at the beginning of this fiscal year. But this is just expenses the last quarter. Of course, we had the emergency purchases for wastewater with the aerator, Skinner's drilling was over 60,000 the last quarter, so these aren't even the full fiscal year, this is just the quarter. There was a lot of inventory purchase, the street department spent close to 26,000 in asphalt and road material. Inventory for the water department, the gas department spent a little over 14,000 for refurbished gas meters. So, those are some of the big ones the last quarter. I kind of wanted to bring those up because one of the things that we'd like to really address from a financial perspective is that we ensure we follow state guidelines. We are required to go out for RFP or fall under a co-op in order to make large purchases. When we spend more than 50,000 with one vendor, we should have an RFP or a contract to back that. I know that this past year, there was a lot of expenses, and we have some of that documentation, but I'd really like to make council more aware, moving forward, when we want to do these expenditures, if there's not a state guideline or law, we follow it so that all the documentation is in place, so when we get audited, we go back to the clean audit. I'm really looking forward to working with auditors this year to get everything back on track. I'd already mentioned, of course, from the employee perspective, the turnover, those are expenses, it takes time and money to train, to hire, even to terminate is an expense. So, hopefully, we can get back on track with that. One last aspect I kind of wanted to bring up on a financial note is what we've encumbered as of October 31st. As of October 31st, and these are just bills that we pay in October that should have, or that spent in September. So, your utilities, those are all services provided in September, we pay them in October. General fund, $63,673. The water department, wastewater and sanitation, $173,224. The airport, $660. Hotel motel, $2,086. And the gas department, $24,208. So, those are all encumbered bills that we're paying during this year that will be recorded against last year. And that's just for October. We tend to get those in till about December, and then we kind of had that conversation with the department heads with, make sure you have them all in. It makes it really hard to audit and record them properly if we don't really know about them. One other thing from a department perspective, we are, and Ramon had brought it up a couple times in regards to technology, we use about a tenth of our system. There's a lot that can be used and can be done, it just takes a little bit more time and effort. So, one of our goals this year is to start getting everything scanned. We do parts of it already, but we're going to go full-ford with everything. We're also going to have a lot more detailed responsibilities and duties so that each of the employees, including myself, can kind of have a game plan. And then when we get audited at the end of the year, it's literally just having to hand over a flash drive, it's not having to do all of the digging and research and who did what and where is what, kind of deal. We've been very lucky, we've always found everything and have everything documented. I'm a paper person, some people hate it, but I will keep every little receipt, piece of paper there is, because when it comes to an audit, you have to have it and you want to be able to explain it. So, when I ask for something five different times, I know people get mad, there's a few department head people in here. It really is so that we can cover the city and that we have all of our documents. Are there any questions?
So, I'll ask some questions and some observations. Can we start with the observations? One, great, we're going to get a monthly report, so thank you for doing that, and it's great to have you back on board, because I know you've got the discipline to go and write things and keep us all on track. Second thing I'd like to, is that when it works at the general fund, you know, we had a budget this last year to shy $5.2 million, even though from a revenue standpoint, we only brought in $4.4 million, and I'm rounding the numbers. So, according to this, we have about $800,000 under run on our revenue. About 300,000 of that was transfers from our fund balance, I get that. But there was a, an under run of over $200,000 relative to administrative, that's back on page number six. And then there's some other stuff in there. Do you recall what that roughly $230,000 should have been and why we under ran that on revenue?
So, these are actual expenses, it doesn't include any of the encumbered. So, there would be some franchise fees owed from the utilities.
Okay.
That would most likely be under the admin.
Would that cover most of it?
It covers a big chunk.
Fine, okay, that's okay, that's close enough then, okay? The other I'll reserve on the general fund relative to expenditures, the good news is we under ran by like $200,000, given where we are from a revenue versus expense. I would also observe, we under ran our streets budget by $460,000, so if we spent all our street money, we'd actually be in over run situation probably. Yeah, so that's just an observation in that area. Relative to the enterprise funds, we had a budget of bringing in about $6.4 billion in terms of total revenue, and our expenditures was about five and a half, so we under ran almost a million dollars of expenses against our revenue. If we pay out the enterprise franchise fees, we've roughly quarter million out of one If we take out the enterprise franchise fees, move roughly a quarter million out of one buck over the other, we still did better in our enterprise funds, but about three quarters of a million dollars. So that's, that's the good news. And I think the decision we made about spending the money at the wastewater plant was a wise decision. We had the dollars to go off of. The next question, I have, we do have a question. Do you recall, Megan, what our city debt is right now? Total, big picture, is it half a million, 600,000?
It's a little over half a million.
A little over, it's a little over 5 million. Yeah, a little over 5 million, okay. And out of that, we're spending about $600,000 a year ballpark?
Yes. We will come up on the next couple of years where we do have some big payments.
Yep.
But right now, we're pretty, we're lower than where we're at, where we were at.
Yeah, I just think about what if we had that $600,000, what could we do with that? That's all I have. Anything else?
There's one other document there. It's the quarterly investment report. Nothing changed. No money was moved out. The city council did allocate fees under the water for certain things. That money was never transferred out. Some of it does need to be transferred to cover some of the payments. I know Eric and I had mentioned it earlier. We would like to come back before council and redo some of this so that the funds can be allocated if needed. If you did notice, none of the money was moved, but the departments covered their expenses. So if we can keep it in reserves, I would like to recommend to council that we keep it in reserves so that, I know Scott would love to have that little bit of money to start attacking the infrastructure and not have me yelling at him for spending money. And that's, we're required to do the quarterly report under our investment policy. So I am providing it to you. And then at some point in the near future, there's a good discussion to be had over how we want to apply these funds and how we want to apply the interest. So the interest right now is not dedicated to these funds. And I would like to make those recommendations down the road.
So we're all excited about seeing you again on the 19th as we start working the budgets.
Yes, the numbers. Numbers are so much easier.
And Eric, while we're on the finance side, just thinking about it, will we do that as part of our normal agenda? Or do we want to think about starting early on the 19th as well? To give sufficient time to walk through, which will probably be not a short discussion.
I think let's schedule extra time on the 19th if we can.
Council okay with that? You know, if we think about it, start four again. Does that work? I just want to kind of get that on the table now so we can talk about it. Thanks, Megan.
And I'll have October's report.
Oh, boy. Okay, next on our agenda tonight, we have no public hearings. We do have the consent agenda. Just a reminder, all, you know, these are acted upon with one vote unless a member of council wants to separately pull out the agenda item for discussion. Other than that, there is no discussion on the consent agenda. And Eric, do you want to just kind of go through the two consent agenda items we have?
The two items we have are the approval of minutes from the city council meeting, last city council meeting on October 15th, 2019. And the second item is to approve resolution 2019-11-year of two for closing a portion of Fifth Street, I would want to name it A and B for our walk November 22nd, 23rd, 2019. This is a consistent handle of the last.
So is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I move that we approve both A and B of the consent agenda.
I'm second.
We have a motion. We have a second. I'm not allowed to vote on anything unless it's an ordinance, given I'm sitting in the mayor's role. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes 4 to 0. Okay, next is the update on the, or information and discussion items. And it looks like I'm kind of first up on this. I got to see if I got my charts here. We don't have them for the screen. Okay, so let me put my slides up here. So I have the obligation to provide on a quarterly basis an update as the Brewster County President of the District. I'll keep this relatively short on a few slides here. Given the questions that came up last time, this was on the agenda particularly when council approved me to continue to represent the city on the BECAT. I thought it worked well, I put a couple of slides together. One of which is, what's the background behind BECAT? And so that's what this first slide is. And for those in the audience who can't see it, there are about 15 items of the primary duties of the Brewster County Assessment District Board. They're established by Texas Code. And it really focuses on the oversight for appraising property, which all of us would look at as simply property act. So that's what the first slide's about. And we have a number of things that we do, including having annual audits. We get resolutions from the taxing entities like cities. And we have to comply with all of the laws. The next slide talks about the BECAT board members, of which there are seven. And I couldn't recall, I left one of them out last time I was talking about it. Our board was established in 1983 to establish representation from all the taxing entities. There are seven members. They are appointed in even years. San Jacinto ISD, City of Alpine, the Alpine Independent School District of Brewster County. As a reminder, council approved me for the meeting and appointment for this next year. In the odd years, will be the Marathon ISD, Terlinga ISD, and the Hospital District. The last chart in the package really talks about the other major islands in this. We do meet the third Tuesday of each month at 11:00 a.m. We typically meet in the Valbert Conference Room. I would say from the city standpoint, the city of Alpine is all up to date on our BECAT requirements. We paid all our bills. We met all our requirements. We fulfilled all our resolutions. And as a reminder, we changed our fiscal year this year to align with the calendar year. And BECAT's operating for 15 months on the 12 months of money that we had because we had a reserve allocated. And the last I mentioned, we get a bi-annual audit. So every other year, the Texas Controller audits us in terms of what we're doing with what's called a MAP audit. There were lots of discrepancies in 2018. One of the things I did when I took over as chair and working with the board, we mapped out a game plan so that we back on track. And we review that at every meeting, which is monthly. And we will be back on track to resolve our issues for our 2020 audit. So we're back in compliance and that would be good to have in place. Are there any questions? Hearing no questions, we'll go on to item number two. And that is our quarterly report by the county-city engagement by our liaison, Councilor.
I don't have a lot to report. I can, I can give you a little bit of stuff, but I really haven't met with anybody. I was hoping to be invited to come and I hadn't been invited, so. So I don't have a lot to, lot to report. But I spoke with Eric and we kind of discussed some of the things that, that they're, that we're working on with the county. And one of them is they're, they're trying to get more involved with the groundwater conservation district and looking at the Sunny Glen, Sunny Glen area and what the recharge capacities are at the wells out there. And working in the city to help work with the remote monitoring on them. And another thing that, when Jessica was here, this is something that we kind of started on was going, getting some of the inventory for the fire department and working, working towards the goal of kind of, I guess, having some of those positions filled and then getting some, finding ways to get volunteers to volunteer for the fire department. Three group of volunteers, I guess. That's all I really have to share. I didn't really have much, I'm sorry.
Anyone have questions for you? Okay, it is Ramon, you've got an update for us and a number of slides in the package related to the TML conference in San Antonio.
What I'm going to do is go and set me up the PowerPoint and just review the PowerPoint on slide here. But basically what I wanted to do is share information on an educational aspect of the experience I had during our attendance of the Texas Municipal League Annual Conference and Exhibit Exhibition, which was held on October 9th to 11th at the Henry V. Gonzalez Convention Center in San Antonio, Texas. And what is it? The TML Annual Conference is one of the nation's largest gatherings of local government leaders in Texas. Who was there, talking to some of the TML organizers? They estimated between 1,500 and 2,000 delegates from Texas cities attended. And they included mayors, city council members, city secretaries, city managers, city attorneys, and city department executives. What I found really interesting about the conference is, one, they open the session and for the keynote speaker, Brian Somes, and he has a really interesting title. He's a digital anthropologist, futurist, and thought leader and quite a, quite a showman. But he focused on how we today are becoming distracted by everyday rituals and our favorite devices, including computers, including TV and whatever else. And the interesting thing, he says, it's, we don't realize to the extent that it is affecting us. It is separating us from the real world. And he basically said, hey, we need to reclaim our attention to become more satisfied and inspired in life and say. Then the conference had various concurrent sessions. And the ones that I picked to go to, one is the Village of the Hills session. And the main thoughts that I got from this is have the courage to take on controversy and risk. Do the most good for the greatest number of people, for the benefit of all. Build a culture that doesn't care who gets it. Be creative and innovative. Create a process to accommodate, to accommodate change in demographics. Ask questions. And the world is designed to change and life is designed to change. Everything has changed. Who we are right now, we're different from where we were an hour ago. Everything changes. The other concurrent session that I went to, that I had an interest in is libraries in your city and your city. And realizing that our main library, which is on War II jurisdiction. I attended the session, but then I found out that the libraries that we're talking about were huge libraries in some of the bigger, bigger cities. But anyways, the key things I, I went away with is libraries are affected when there are strong community partnerships. Partnerships are needed for fundraising to support educational activities at libraries. And libraries help cities to accomplish many goals. Then after that, I headed out as well as most of the delegates to the exhibition hall. And I was amazed at, I don't know how many hundreds, not thousands of exhibitors were there. They were sharing information on selling items of like computers and things for, for the city halls to selling backhoes and ambulances and wherever else as well. There were two exhibits that caught my attention. One, is they, they have the speed limit control panels that you can actually put up anywhere in areas where we know there are speeders. And it has a sensor on it. And as drivers come up to it, if they're going beyond the speed limit, it'll show in bright colors if you slow down, you're going so fast, or the actual speed limit. And at this, at this table I went to, they had some small items for sale. And I think that run would be $1,500 and $2,000. And I was, I was amazed that the young lady was there and said, hey, you're the second guy from Alpine to come here. And I said, who was the first guy? She said, I know him tall and, and very nuisance like. And then the next booth I went to was the one with the drones on display. And of course, as I mentioned earlier, I like drones. And they range in prices between 1,500 to about 3,000. And I was amazed at what you can do with them. But it takes time and it takes a little money and training to get people equipped to do, to work them out. I also got invited by some fellow councilmen from the city of Pecos to attend an Association of Hispanic International official meeting that evening. And I'm glad I did. I didn't even know the association existed. I learned from them. And the highlight for me there was I got to meet the actual founder of the, of the association. And of course, another thing that drew me to the, to the event is they had one of Texas' most famous bands playing Little Joy of the Familia. The only thing I didn't like is the $9 bill price. The next day, back to networking and consulting. And I had a chance to speak with a number of other councilmen from other cities as well. It was fun to see Pecos, Marpa, and a few others attending. And then the last concurrent session I went to, which I found very, very interesting, is one that was entitled Community-Based Strategic Planning. And basically all it focuses on is that, according to surveys, apparently there are some symptoms, and I can't even read my, my small print here, but where communities are, residents in communities are getting involved and they feel left out. They feel so entangled because they want to participate, but for some reason, there's no mechanism by municipal governments to get them involved. And so some of the symptoms behind that are low voter turnout. And people are just, I don't know, can't read this. But anyway, people are not interested in attending primarily because they feel left out. And what is being said is that a new approach is for municipal governments possibly is to go to strategic planning for the municipal government. And if you learn that the works-up session...